First item on the agenda is to accept or modify the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All those in favor of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Community participation. Community participation is intended for the public to give input on relevant school issues. They're not intended to be a question and answer period, as this may be the first time the board has heard this information. Please do not expect individual responses or any comment by the board at this time, but be assured that any concerns will be reviewed. Please print your name on a sheet at the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comment to three minutes, or a little bit longer if you need.
My name is, they call me Miki McDonald, and I'm with the front of the Lions. We have purchased this camera, and it's called a Spot camera. It was developed to test kids' eyes from six months to six years. It tells you everything about the kid's eyes. Stigmatism, if the pupil isn't centered in the eye where it's supposed to be, it's called gaze, nearsighted, farsighted, and some other problems with the eyes. And I don't know all those big names. I've been taking this into the schools. I went through it with Mr. Hirsch, and testing, I have tested all the kindergarten and all the third grade this year. I've been called back to do some that were new students, because every new student, you know, has to go through a physical. Next year, I'd like to include seventh and 10th graders. With this machine, I tested LFK's third grade, every one of them, in less than an hour. Now, I don't know if you've ever watched the nurse test eyes at school. Takes considerable more time than that. So with your all's permission, I'd like to do seventh and 10th grade. It's very interesting. You go, just kind of pick your age.
He said it goes to age six?
No, we go up to 100.
Oh.
It was developed to go up to six months.
Our pediatrician uses that, and Miki, you just turn the lights off and literally look at it, and it's...
As long as it kind of gets you to gaze. Do you have that tattooed?
No.
I guess you're between 100, 200?
Yeah, yeah, somewhere close.
Okay. I don't know if I can get you on. And it tells me if I'm too far or too close, and most time it works. A lot of times on adults, it won't work, because as we get older, our pupils get smaller. And it doesn't want to read you on.
Miki probably won't read on me, because I've had surgery on one eye.
Do you hear the little birds chirping?
Yes.
There's also dots going, which is helpful. I couldn't get you.
That's okay.
I think it's the angle.
But it does.
It takes maybe five seconds. If they gaze on it, we've got it. To avoid HIPAA, I request that somebody be with me when I do this with a list of the kids' names. All I tell the person with me is pass or refer. Then the school nurse will send something to the parents to let them know that their vision was checked, and that they should probably go see an eye doctor. Any questions?
How many children did you refer this year?
Okay, I tested 593, and we referred 98.
So you're okay with the HIPAA?
Yes, I don't know any of their names. I just have them sit down, and take their, kids love it. And then I just say pass and refer, and the teacher marks their names, and by that. If you all think there's a problem with HIPAA, we can get a HIPAA page signed. Some places do that.
We've looked into it, and there's not a problem with HIPAA. And Miki has done a great job in assisting with our screenings. We screen, as you know, for hearing, for vision, for speech and language when we have students at certain grade levels, and when they also transfer in. And she's been awesome support for our staff, and it makes the beginning of the year and frankly, all through the year with new students so much easier. It's a great partnership.
And I tell them, if you have a student that comes up that all of a sudden is going haywire on you, you know, or splitting really bad, just call me. It takes literally no time to go in and do a student, you know. And lots of times I have vision. I did a preschool last year, and I told the teacher, I said, "Refer this one." And when we were all done, she said, "Can you redo that one?" And I said, "Yeah, why?" And she said, "Well, that's my daughter." And I said, "Well, she needs to see an eye doctor." And she said, "That's amazing, because just last night," she said, "I noticed she wasn't coloring in the lines." So had I not done that, I don't know, maybe she'd have taken her to the eye doctor for that worse, but it's a real good way to tell when there's a problem.
How do we get the data as far as how many children did get a referral, or sought a referral?
Well, the school nurses collect all that data every year on all the screenings, and they're submitted to our office, and we can provide that if you like. We can do that for screening, we can do that for vision, hearing, and speech and language.
How expensive is that instrument?
I tell you, you're going to take my job away. You buy a new one, it's about $10,000.
Thanks to the Lions Club for providing that.
Yeah. We were able to get, with a grant from Lions of Virginia, $2,500, and we got a refurbished one, so it was $5,000.
Wow, that's great.
So, and I've done all of them this year, but I'm hoping to get others to do some more. But not having to have HIPAA and names and all that, it's easier for us to go in and just set it up and do it.
That's great, thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair, as a bit of a shameless plug, as a somewhat sporadic attendee of the Lions Club and a member for almost 30 years, vision is probably the main focus of Lions Club, their overall focus. And this is one thing that they're very passionate about, and particularly with children, and the purchase of this camera is partially, has been funded through the site game, which Warren County Athletics allows the Lions Club each year to have one game that we produce the programs and receive the profits from. And that's the majority of where the funding for this came from. So it's, on behalf of the Lions, it's a, you know, it's a privilege to be able to do that for our students. And on behalf of the school board, thanks to the Lions for being so passionate about it.
When you said passion, I'm very passionate about eyes. I was born blind in my left eye. Many, many years ago, when they used those big, heavy machines, and the lionettes were in operation, I was able to convince them to buy a machine to take to the schools. So this is so much better, and I'm just delighted that we were able to do it. So, okay?
Thank you for coming out tonight, sharing with us.
No problem.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Chairman and school board members. As you know, I'm Kim Wilkland. I'm the president of the Warren County Educational Association, which I'm a co-president this year. Sharon St. Myers is our other co-president. But I just wanted to tell you, as I do every November, the, this November, it's the 18th through the 27th is American Education Week, which is something that's sponsored, or that was originally started, oh gosh, with a whole bunch of different organizations. It was, yeah, it was actually back when they were doing IQ testing for World War I, and that was kind of the impetus when they were realizing, "Oh, we've got to have a focus on education." So it wasn't just the, it wasn't just the American, or National Education Association, it was some other service organizations. But because of that, the superintendent has been kind enough to allow us to do a fundraiser for, it will be split between the Warren County Educational Endowment and the WCEA Scholarship Fund, which we give scholarships to seniors at each of the high schools. One of the things we did this year was we purchased for our members t-shirts that said, and of course, this is nationwide, not just, not just DEA, or WCEA, or NEA, or anything. It's Red for Ed is a nationwide movement right now to bring awareness to educational issues. And so we will be doing a fundraiser. The teachers will be, you know, pay $20, and for the rest of the school year, on the first Wednesday of every month, they can wear jeans. I think we can raise a lot of money there. The first Wednesday of every month, they get to wear jeans, they can wear a Red for Ed shirt if they have it, or they can just wear something red. But that's going to be our fundraiser during American Education Week, and we'll split those funds, or what we raise, between those two organizations, the endowment and the scholarship fund.
It's $20 for the year?
$20 for the year.
I said, "It's $20 for every Wednesday."
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, it's $20 for the first Wednesday of every month. So we didn't want to, we don't, we don't want to take away from our professionalism, or our professional look, I should say. Well, as I'm here in my sneakers, but I'm the crazy music lady, so it's okay.
You always have music.
So, but I just wanted to share that with you, and we'll let you know next month how much money we raise.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Consent agenda. Is there a motion for consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Reports. Enough Project, anti-bullying and domestic violence awareness project by DECA. Mr. Fox.
Good evening. Four weeks ago at the Festival of Leaves, it was time for lunch, and I knew that DECA was there, and I knew that they do a wonderful job as one of their big fundraisers, so I walked up to go buy one of their sandwiches. And it was a wonderful sandwich, by the way. As I was leaving, I came across this most wonderful professional display. And it just so happens that that display was from the DECA program. It's called the Enough Project for Anti-Bullying and Domestic Awareness. And just a moment, I'm going to invite Mr. Gardner and Ms. Harp up to introduce their DECA team. But very quickly, found out something that today DECA sponsored 26 students in job shadowing over a dozen local businesses. I hosted our students, so I thought that was a wonderful thing to add for tonight. But right now, I'd like to, Mr. Gardner, Ms. Harp, for the Enough Project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Obviously, I'm Mr. Gardner, this is Ms. Harp. Every year, we do a program of work where we plan out different chapter projects, chapter activities, that pretty much take over the entire fall, and then a lot of these projects we will submit for competition at both the state. And if the state does well, then we move on to nationals. Last year, 10 students from Warren County High School went to the national conference in Orlando, Florida. To give you a little bit of background, the Enough Project is part of our community awareness project that we do. Every year, I find one student that's just very passionate about public relations or community service, and I say, "Okay, what organization or organization do you want to try to highlight this year and to do something for?" Last year, it was one of the Warrior Project. This year, one of my students, the kind of one that cut this thing rolling, said, "I want to do something with Phoenix Project, Domestic Violence Awareness." And trust me, when I say these kids are passionate about this project, they're passionate about the project, you know. My job is real easy, because all I do is put them in the right group, put them in the direction, and then get out of the way, because they're going to run me over. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the three. This is a chapter project which involves all the students, all 50 members of the Warren County DECA chapter, which has grown to 50 members. Four years ago, when I came here, there was no DECA chapter, and the first year, we had 13. So that, every year, we've added more and more and more students. So they, they balled into it. And like I said, my job is easy, because all I do is say, "Okay, well, we got this," and then I get out of the way, and they, they take it and run with it. They do an outstanding job of it. The three young ladies that are in charge of this year's DECA project are Haley Hoos, Mina Garnett, and Brianna Cott. And I'm going to let them explain to you what the Enough Project is, but trust me, they know a whole lot more about this than I do.
As you all know, my name is Haley Hoos.
I'm Mina Garnett, Jr.
And I'm Brianna Cott. We are all students of Warren County High School, and we are very proud members of Warren County High School's DECA chapter. We have our project, which is based on public relations, which involves the relationships between people within our community. My first instinct was to go to the Phoenix Project, a local help center for victims of domestic violence. We are so proud to be partnering with them and working on our project, because we know that it's very hard for somebody who feels like they're stuck and trapped in this situation, especially since teenagers who are witnessing violence in their families are 50% more likely to have an abusive relationship themselves. This was a very scary statistic that me and Micah Coordinates found, and we decided we wanted to do something to help. So we set up a booth at a football game to start with, and we handed out information with the hotline for victims for domestic abuse to call. And we also handed out information for the Phoenix Project's location and other information and resources for them as well. But as time went on, we felt that we needed to implement something a little bit more into our project.
We helped raise awareness for child abuse by handing out purple pennmills. The pinnmill idea came from an organization known as Pennmills for Prevention. They have a slogan, "All children deserve great childhoods because our children are our future." Us as a team, we strongly believe in that, and we strongly encourage that you have the proper emotional relationship with your child, because what you say to your child means more than you will ever know.
These days, social media is everywhere. Snapchat, Instagram, Twitter, the list goes on. Despite the many positive uses it has, it has just as many or more negative ones. The sad truth is that social media opens up a gateway to cyberbullying. Cyberbullies use the internet to tear people down and spread hate without having to show their face or take responsibility for their actions. What they don't know is that victims of cyberbullying can experience feelings such as loneliness, isolation, and extreme stress and anxiety. Our mission here is to spread awareness and educate our youth on the impact that one simple text or Snapchat can have on someone's mental health and self-esteem.
We also helped raise awareness for bullying prevention by hosting an event at Skyline Middle School. At this event, students got a chance to interact and sign pledge cards. The pledge card simply stated that all children deserve to go to school without being picked on or bullied. It also stated that if children were to see another being bullied, that they're going to report it.
These are the pledge cards that the students sign at the middle school, and now we're handing out the pennmills that we handed out to promote awareness for child abuse. I bet you all are wondering, well, what does all of this mean? Domestic abuse, child abuse, and bullying all have one thing in common: mental health. We want to make sure that everybody feels like they have a safe place to go to, and that they have people that they feel that they can talk to. Every person in this room knows what it's like to feel alone, and we want to make sure no child has to go through that.
We plan to come together with the guidance counselors and our act club members to go to the middle schools the week of November 18th through the 22nd and do activities with the children. It's time to take initiative and educate our youth about the importance of healthy relationships, whether it's in your home or over the phone.
For one part of our project, we are joining with the hashtag #LayderHaters campaign sponsored by DECA. Hundreds of DECA members all over the U.S. are using this campaign, this online pledge board, to gain traction in our fight against bullying. By signing this form, which we're hoping all of our students sign, you are promising to not only report any bullying that you see, but to, not only to report any bullying that you see, but to also stop the hate and spread the love.
Board members, we need your help to say enough to domestic violence, enough to child abuse, and enough to bullying. Will you join us and say enough?
Enough. Are there any questions? I just want to say you all have an excellent presentation. I don't know if you all take speech class, but you speak very well. You look, you look great. I love the blazers. So keep it up. Is this something that will continue year after year?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Last year, Mr. Verger spoke about the Wounded Warriors thing. That was my project last year, and we did things like raise money for wounded veterans, and we donated money, and it's very similar to what we're doing this year, except this year, we really want to go out with a bang, especially since I'm a senior, it's my last year, and I really do have a passion for this and for DECA. And with your all's approval to make November 18th through the 22nd Enough Week, I feel really confident that our project's going to be a success, and not only will we go to nationals in Nashville, Tennessee, but we're going to help a lot of kids out. So I'm really excited for that.
I wish you well.
Part of what they're doing is, let's show the little stuff. Each, we, we partnered with what we'll do with national media. And so what they're doing is they're doing a, the sign that you see in front of the large, that's a prototype, and they're actually creating two for each of the schools, so that, and it's got, as you can see, it's got the name of the school in there, the best school, pledges to say enough to bullying in the school, to be up to the principals of heart to hang those in a prominent place. We're going to be, I know that, I saw some furrows of concern with sort of national pledge signing online, trust me. All it is is the kid's first name. They will do a card. They won't actually get on the computer, they will do a card, and then the young ladies here will enter in there, and all it is is the student's first name and the fact that they're in DECA. And that's, that's the only identifying thing on there, so it's no last name, no county, no anything like that, so it's, it's about as anonymous as you can be. The hashtag #LayderHaters is an initiative brought on by national DECA in partnership with AT&amp;T. So this is, you know, the, they, they've really done a good job of this, and later, like I said, I can get out of the way.
You got it.
Bull owner one, bull owner two, bull owner three over there. A little edit, the pledge card that you all see there, those are the ones that they used at the Skyline Middle School Fall, Family Fall Festival, I think is what they called it. They had over 100 cards signed between there and Festival of Leaves by school age children.
You all have a float in the parade, too, did you not?
So other Phoenix Project, my other...
Okay, okay. Maybe that's what it was, because I remember seeing something down there, maybe I saw it at the festival. I think it's great. How did the underclassmen receive you guys when you were in the schools? The middle schools?
Through the libraries.
When you went to the school and you still go to the younger children, how did they receive you guys?
We are doing, we're doing that delivery team.
Okay, how's that, yeah, I thought that was the second go around. Okay, I'm the center of the set, sorry.
So talk about when the kids came up there in the Fall Festival, what kind of reaction did you give to those kids? Was the sign there at the DECA tent?
Yeah, really, actually, we got to talk to them about the importance of healthy relationships, as I had said. A lot of them were, like, really surprised to see that, you know, people actually do care about it, because a lot of people won't come forward because they're scared, you know, maybe nobody's going to do anything about it, and, you know, the attacker is going to get worse, or I'm going to get in trouble for it, or something like that. So a lot, a lot of the kids did come to realize, like, "Oh, maybe, maybe I should say something, you know, maybe it is okay to speak up." I think that it's, it was a really good thing to do.
I think it's great, because Mr. Fox and I had a little discussion off on the side about having the older students, the juniors, seniors somehow work with the middle school children to know that there's somebody there, a big brother, big sister type thing, that cares about me. So I love it. I think it's great. Thank you, guys, ladies.
I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then we can have the motion on that. Resolution of the Warren County School Board supporting the Warren County High School DECA Club Anti-Bullying Initiative. Whereas bullying in school is a pervasive problem that can have negative consequences for the school climate and for the right of students to learn in a safe environment without fear, and one that can have negative lifelong consequences, both for students who bully and for their targets. And whereas bullying is comprised of direct behaviors such as teasing, taunting, threatening, hitting, and stealing, that are initiated by one or more students against the target, as well as indirect behaviors such as spreading rumors and acting in other ways to cause a student to be socially isolated through intentional exclusion, with all such behaviors, direct or indirect, amounted to physical or psychological intimidation occurring repeatedly over time to create an ongoing pattern of harassment and abuse. And whereas bullying other children and being the target of bullies are considered risk factors for youth violence by the National Center for Injury Prevention and Control of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and other relevant organizations. And bullies whose behavior goes unchallenged risk ending up as violent adults engaging in domestic violence and child abuse. And whereas bullying for too long has gone unchallenged, with students feeling that adult intervention is infrequent and ineffective, and will only break more harassment from bullies. And whereas those who stand by passively watching or actively encouraging bullying are also affected by those hostile acts. They encourage bullying by creating an audience, they may become desensitized to cruelty, they may learn to intimidate or imitate bullying behavior and become bullies themselves, and/or they may be fearful for their own safety, adding to their own insecurity. Therefore, be it resolved that the Warren County School Board supports activities that address the prevention, intervention, and elimination of bullying, and resolve that the Warren County School Board supports Warren County High School's DECA chapter in its endeavors to promote a culture of zero tolerance for bullying behavior in our schools, and be it further resolved that the Warren County School Board supports the Warren County High School's DECA chapter in helping to create a student-led culture of intolerance for bullying. We have a motion for the resolution. Madam Chair, I move the proposed resolution of the Warren County School Board supporting the Warren County High School's DECA Club Anti-Bullying Initiative be adopted as presented.
Second.
All those in favor of aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If you all don't want to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you're welcome to leave, especially if you have a one. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, dar.
Update on Comprehensive Long Range Plan. Mrs. Shubert?
Thank you. It's difficult to follow that.
Yes.
The 2016-2021 Comprehensive Long Range Plan was approved June 1st, 2016, and updated in October 2017 and October 2019. It is required by the standards of quality for the school board to be updated every two years regarding the progress towards the strategies and objectives of the long range plan. There are eight sections of the long range plan, which include instruction, health and safety, personnel, transportation, technical, finance, facilities and operations, and school community relationships. During the 2017-18 and 2018-19 school year, we made progress in all of the sections of the long range plan. I would like to highlight a few of those accomplishments. Our instruction group continues to work on reviewing and revising existing curricula in the four core content areas to ensure alignment with state... in the four core content areas to ensure alignment with state standards in both content and rigor. Teachers and the instructional resource team continue to work on math and English alignment. Our schools are working on full accreditation by analyzing benchmark results and making changes to instruction to help students be successful. We are administering a universal screener for reading and math. Students who are in need of additional support receive math and reading interventions and are tested on a more frequent basis. All schools have a school improvement process planned in place, which is based on a comprehensive needs assessment in English, math, social studies, science, attendance, and behavior. The comprehensive needs assessment helps to determine areas of strength and areas which need improved. The needs assessment helps develop the goals for the school year. All schools are concentrating on helping teachers implement the intended curriculum, the process on how to implement the curriculum, and monitor, and monitoring student achievement. The school improvement plan includes a type of evidence that will be used to determine the success of meeting these goals and objectives. We continue to discuss and evaluate strategies for staff and teacher retention. The salary adjustment for teachers with eleven to twenty-five years of service last year was helpful. We need to continue this work in the upcoming years for teachers with one to ten years of experience and twenty-six to thirty years of experience. We will continue to gather and compare salaries with adjacent school divisions to identify areas for improvement. We have had many successes during the last two years. We will continue to work on the goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan. I'll be able to answer any questions, or we have experts in the audience who will be able to answer the questions I am not able to.
Over the plan, the fact that we've been able to make progress in most every area is very encouraging.
So this plan is on our website, and all of the school plans, our school improvement plans are on their websites as well, and we update them quarterly.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Report. Mrs. Shepherd.
So just a reminder, senior athletic passes are available at the school board office for anyone to stop by who is a senior. They can receive a free pass for athletic events, which are hosted at our schools. The superintendent student advisory council met on October the twenty-third. Each of our schools had a student representative. We discussed what the students liked about school and what they would like to see changed. We received many great suggestions, and it is always a great pleasure meeting with the students each, each month. On October the twenty-sixth, at the V B O D A State Marching Assessment at Monticello High School, Skyline High School band earned a superior rating, which is the highest rating the band could receive, and we would like to congratulate them on this rating. The A.S. Rhodes renovation contract has been reviewed by our attorney and is currently being reviewed by the architect of WPR. We should have a contract for the school board to consider at the next school board meeting on Tuesday, November the nineteenth. The VRA bonds were refunded at the end of October. The 2011 refunding generated a net present value savings of one million, four hundred, forty-five thousand, three hundred, forty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, which is six point one seven percent of refunded principal. And the 2012 refunding generated net present value savings of two million, nine hundred, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred, two dollars and ninety-two cents, which is ten point one two percent of refunded principal. The total net present value savings is four million, three hundred, ninety-five dollars, two hundred, four million, three hundred, ninety-five thousand, two hundred, forty-seven dollars and seventy cents, which was a little lower than was presented at our work session in our school board meeting in October. And just a reminder that our next school board meeting, our school board work session is on Tuesday, November the nineteenth at five, instead of on Wednesday, November the twentieth.
And that's because we'll be heading out to the.
V S B A convention. Yes.
Thank you. School Board Reports. Mr. Williams.
Just a couple comments. I was going to welcome our two new members tonight. Since the election is still being counted, we have Mr. Renaldi has been elected, and the South River is still being voted on, and.
Unofficial.
Unofficial.
Ms. Pence.
Yeah.
It'd come in to see.
Oh, did it?
Yeah, unofficial.
I hadn't heard that, so. Seeing Ms. Pence in the audience yesterday evening, I was at Skyline, and we were standing, I walked up outside and it was dark, and we need to take a look, because Ms. Pence said, "It's dark up here," and I was like, "Yeah, I can't see anybody's face." So that entranceway going into the gym off Skyline Vista, it's really, really dark.
It is. I was there also.
Oh, that's right. You were there. So anyway, I guess we had that conversation, and we need to add some lights of some sort there, just for safety issues, I guess, Mr. Liddoak, see if you can look at that.
Are they there? They just didn't come on.
No, they're just not there.
The lights that weren't there were on.
We looked all around and couldn't find any lights that were.
I, it's, it's kind of been my duty to report L F K's.
Okay.
Lights being out of sync as the time changes, and they have a tendency to either come on way too early or.
Everything was probably, everything was burning that was there, it's just the distance, I think, was too much, and I don't know if the light bulbs were different or whatever, but it needed some help. So anyways, that's all I have.
Mr. Reddick.
Well, Ralph Renaldi, I think's going to be very good to have him aboard, along with everyone else, but he's had a background in the NASA script system, and I helped him with his campaign. He's fifty-five. The, we need to call the county, I guess, anyway, Jim, because the clock up there is wrong.
Oh, if you leave it for six months, it'll be fine.
Yeah, we just need about six months, an hour.
Broke, a broken clock, it's ringing twice a day.
Oh, another thing on the DECA, that's, that's really a super growth in putting that in. I've been exposed to it a little bit this year, because, well, with the system we have with Warren County, but my grandson is in Clark County, the high school, and he's embraced it. He's just jumped right in and kind of helped along with a couple of different projects, and they really do a nice job. This is very impressive tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Penney, too. So can we unofficially congratulate Ms. Pence? Because she got the unofficial call.
Yes. So we unofficially congratulate, but, but yeah, the DECA girls, they did a really great job, and it's going to be amazing, and it's very important. The bullying, as we've seen, is out of control, so enough is enough. And that's all I have.
Mr. Williams.
Well, I'm going to officially welcome you, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and Mr. Renaldi as well. You know, it's always bittersweet when there's a change, but, you know, these two members have served very well, and I know you and Mr. Renaldi will as well, and as, as we've seen with the long range plan, we're making progress in every area, and we'll just continue to keep making progress. Congratulations to all of those who were elected yesterday. We look forward to working with you. You know, there's no, no reason not to start out on a positive note, and consider it's going to be a good working relationship, so that's all I have.
And I'll just ditto that, and congratulations, and also, Mr. Williams, congratulations on your reelection, and look forward to some, some good progress in the years to come. Action Agenda. Approval of 2020-2021 School Calendar. Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you. Policy I C E I D requires the school board to establish the division's calendar in accordance with applicable regulations and to include contingencies for making up teacher days and teaching hours missed for emergency situations. The attached calendar is being presented for your consideration. School will start August the eleventh, which is a Tuesday. The end of the first advisory would be October the fourteenth. November twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh would be fall break. December twenty-second through, December twenty-second will be the end of the first advisory. December twenty-third through January the fifth will be winter break for students. December twenty-third through January the third will be winter break for staff. March tenth will be the end of the third advisory. March twenty-ninth through April fifth will be a guaranteed spring break. June fourth will be the last day of school. There are seven built-in weather days. Students will not be in school for more than a hundred, a hundred and eighty days if you do not miss seven days due to weather. The days will be taken off from the end of the school year. There are thirteen professional days built into the calendar. The first reading was October the second. The second reading and discussion was October the sixteenth, and this is recommendation for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I would have any questions. I think they were answered previously. Anyone discussion or questions?
I just, I just appreciate, and I think all the parents and citizens appreciate having the calendar in place and in writing early so that plans can be made, and they, you know, they're able to make plans for the year, the upcoming year, and that type of thing. You know, several years ago, we started getting it out before the first of the year so that we could, we could let folks know what, what the upcoming calendar is going to be. So it's, it's been a big improvement, and I've gotten, I've gotten good feedback that people, they may not agree with the start date or end date, and when graduation is and that kind of thing, but they appreciate knowing it in, in advance and in a solid form.
Would you like to add a question?
I will. I move the proposed twenty, 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 twenty-one school calendar to be approved as presented. First day of school will be Tuesday, August eleventh, two thousand and twenty, and the last day of school will be Friday, June fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Hold those in favor or not?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Purchase for Elementary Wireless. Mr. Grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The elementary schools at Warren County Public Schools are in need of Wi-Fi upgrades. Our elementary schools are currently outfitted with approximately one access point for every classroom, and this upgrade will increase the Wi-Fi saturation to one access point per classroom. And if you're not sure what an access point is, and you're just kind of looking at me, so what it is, is it's what you connect, when you connect to Wi-Fi on your cell phone or your, your device. Usually, they only have a capacity, there's a limited capacity. So as we get more and more Chromebooks or Chromebook carts into classrooms, they'll start bumping each other out. So in order to, in order to prepare for more Chromebooks to come into classrooms, we need to have more access points, or we call them APs. So that's, that's what they are. Ours here is that little white round circle, that's what you're connecting, and those are, that's wired to a switch or a router to the internet, and that's how you get your internet, so. The funding for this project is coming from the E-Rate funds and from the Warren County Public Schools' technology budget. E-Rate's going to pay for seventy percent of the eligible products and services. The entire cost of the project is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents. However, Warren County Public Schools will only be responsible for forty, forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one, and, sorry, Mr. Rosen, eighty-six cents.
You got it on the outside. Every movement.
Of this project due to the E-Rate discount and the Cisco trade-in program for the ineligible items. Products and services for this project were bid through the USAC E-Rate bidding process. Does anybody have any questions?
How long will this carry us?
So, it'll probably last, let's see, the first Cisco ones went about eight to ten years, I believe, and then we just had those replaced up at the high school about two years ago, so I'd say about eight to ten years. This is also, these APs also will match the other ones, so we're all logging into the same portal to be able to check, you know, check settings and check activity and those types of things. So we're not having to run between different portals, or, or at one point, on the old system, we just had to go to the actual access point and plug in a laptop. We don't have to do that anymore, or wireless, and it's all web-based, so.
So eight years, and then you've got to do it again, keep adding.
Yep, that's why, that's why they have the, the M C C created this USAC to be able to give us some funding to, to be able to.
Yeah, that's to make the usage of that stuff as far as being updated, you know, some of it, it was only two years ago. It'll be nice to have it put together.
We'll stretch it as long as possible, believe me.
Yeah, sure.
You seem to be good at that.
I have one question for Mr. Grant. I guess Rose is included in this. We get those new access points, and the remodel happens, we'll be able to use these access points again after.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
It wouldn't be like, oh, no, you have to get all new.
No, 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 we can, we can reuse. We did the same thing with Resi.
Resi.
When we, we pulled up, we just pulled the access points, let them do their job, and then we put them back, so.
Really?
Your motion.
Madam Chair, I move the approval to give of the purchase of wireless products and services for A.S. Rhodes, E. Wilson Morrison, Hilda J. Barber, Leslie Fox Kaiser, and Reston Jeffries Elementary Schools in amount of forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second.
Hold those in favor or not?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Stay where you are. Wiring for Elementary Schools Wireless Upgrade.
Thank you. Okay, so in order to have wireless, you need to have the wireless wired to something, so this is the part of the wiring we need to do in order to connect the wireless access points. So additional cabling needs to be installed in each elementary school to support the upcoming wireless upgrade. This will be done in conjunction with the E-Rate wireless project and is required for the new access points to be installed. The cost of the project is thirty-nine thousand, no cents, and the services and equipment for this project was quoted through the Town of Royal IT contract, which I've included in the, in the document, so you can take a look at that. Are there any questions?
Mr. Rose, you had that upon?
Yeah, probably thank you, Madam Chair.
You want to do it?
Sure.
Madam Chair, when I move that approval be given to install wiring for wireless access points at A.S. Rhodes, E. Wilson Morrison, Hilda J. Barber, Leslie Fox Kaiser, and Reston Jeffries Elementary Schools in the amount of thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Second. Second. Hold those in favor or not?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of 2019-2020 Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee Members. Mr. Fox.
Thank you. The Perkins Five is the reauthorization of the Perkins Act. In accordance with the Perkins Five, strengthening career and technical education for the twenty-first century, an advisor committee will be established to serve in the development, implementation, and evaluation of CTE programs. The proposed members from our community, Charlie Sackett, Mark Robinson, Karen Peer, Tracy Llewellyn, Douglas Parsons, Jim Wells, Paul Thompson, Mike Abel, Ashley Sickle, Ray Bramble, Katrina Mead, Larry Baker, Colin Miller, Tom Breed, and Jane Baker.